September 20th, 2021, council meeting to order. At this time, the Honorable Brandon Goffey from District 6 will lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, we pray that you bless us this evening. Thank you for everyone getting here safe. Pray that we keep clear heads and make the best decisions for our community. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We move to the oath of office. If the following individuals would come forward in order to be sworn in for your board or commission: Jewel Rogers and Marlo Dykes with Bethesda Fire Tax District Board; Anne Witt; April Hershey; Chelsea Paget; Tiffany Muller; and Talia White for the York County Library Board. As you make your way to the front, on behalf of the council, we do want to thank you for your willingness to serve and to do so voluntarily. A lot of times, you do this thanklessly, and our council wants to make sure that we let you know we can't do what we do without your help and support. We appreciate what you do and the time and dedication you give to serving on these boards.
I am the county attorney in charge of the Minister of Health and Public health office, honored per post to Minister of Health and Public Health volunteers of our county. So again, thank you by doing the work to the chair. Do you need to raise your right hand and repeat after me, Minister of Health? Have you solemnly swear?
I have solemnly sworn.
And I am duly qualified?
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state?
According to the Constitution of this state.
Exercise the duties of the office?
Exercise the duties of the office.
Which I've been appointed.
To the way I've been appointed.
And I will, to the best of my ability?
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof?
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend?
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state?
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
At this time, we move to the appearances portion of our agenda. We have Ernest Brown with Clinton Connection to address the council.
Good evening, afternoon, and thank you. I'm used to being lax rather than focused, but that's okay. My name is Ernest Brown, of course, and I'm the executive director and CEO of Community Medicine Foundation, DBA North Central Family Medicine in Rock Hill, South Carolina. I've been there for almost 30 years now. February, every 30 years. Came here to provide and to establish a community health center for the citizens of Rock Hill, York County, Lancaster, and Chester as well. And we've done so pretty well for that long, starting with just me to now a staff of 115 and three facilities. Fourth one will be coming soon as well. I just wanted to give a little bit of background of who I am and what I support here. And I'm here to support the South Side TIF. I will try to explain what that is, because I'm sure you already know. But I do know that the South Side is a district that is in dire need of support and redevelopment and establishment to be a vital part of Rock Hill as well as York County. There's been millions or billions of dollars maybe even spent in Rock Hill with a lot of new development going on, but it hasn't reached the South Side yet. And that is what my major concern is. My organization has personally put about $8 million in development in South Rock Hill with the major facilities that we have built. And the healthcare that we're providing to over 10,000 people every year, and most of them, around 50% of them, of course, are the uninsured population, those who wouldn't get healthcare if it weren't for the federal quadafair health center that we are that's providing that healthcare. At one time, we had a site over here in York about 15 years ago, but it didn't do well, so we had to close it down. We'd certainly like to do it again. But South Rock Hill has been the stepchild, if you want to call it that, for all these years, and it's up to somebody to do something about that. And this tax increment funding is going to be one of the ways in which we can do that. I know all of you are people who care about other people. You care about underserved. Some of you may not have been poor, may not have been homeless, may not have been on drugs or whatever, but you're still human beings, and so are some of these people that we serve. You have to have been in that situation before you could fully understand how bad it is and how much these people need that additional support that just infrastructure money would give to them so they can have good water and sewer, they can have good streets, sidewalks, and curbs and gutters that all the other sections have. We need your help to do that. I'd like to tell just one story before I quit, because providing healthcare the way we do to the underserved population, you may not understand that sometimes we serve the children who come in with respiratory problems. And we treat that and send them back home. Couple of weeks or so, they come back again with the same respiratory problem. And you wonder why, because we gave them good treatment. Well, we dig a little deeper into it, into the social aspects and the social determinants of health, and we find that that person lives in a house that's got plastic over the windows and a kerosene heater. They're not getting ventilation, so they're getting sick all over. You might could help some of these people by improving those housing developments in those areas so they can have ventilation in their home, so they won't get sick because they can't afford to live anywhere else and because they don't have proper diets. We're trying to increase food deficit situation in the south part of Rock Hill. I know you all are good Christian people, at least I think you are, and you probably have faith in all those kinds of things, and you all believe in the Constitution probably. That's for other people, the people in behind, and all of the people. So this is one way you can implement some of that by helping some of these people who really need it. So I ask you to support the South Side TIF and the Clinton Connection project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. And just so folks at home understand, the council was provided a FedEx probably just a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago, about this $225 million proposal. At this time, council's not had a chance to review that. It's not been presented to us formally, but our staff is looking into that so that we can make a response at a future date. At this time, we move to the public forum session of our meeting. Just some reminders: When you come up to the front, if you would please state your name and give your address before you start, you will be given two minutes to speak. And the reason why we do this is it's limited at the front end, typically four matters that are on the agenda, but folks don't have an opportunity to speak about. And it was a chance to give anyone who wants a chance to speak about something that's on their mind. If you would, make sure to look up on the screens so that we can keep our meeting running. There'll be two minutes, and when your two minutes is up, it will start blinking. And if you could please stop talking and wrap up your comments without me having to interject, I absolutely hate cutting people off, and so if you would be mindful of that, I would very much appreciate it. First up is David Lisk.
I'm going to ask, there's a number of us that are here for the Clinton Connection, if you'd like to just stand up. Good evening, my name is David Lisk, and my address is 929 Sylvia Circle. So my office is actually there, and I have a number of hats. But one of the hats that I wear is I'm the current co-chair of Impact York County, which is a coalition of organizations that serve in York County and are focused on creating a culture of improving community health. As you might expect, creating a culture for improving community health can encompass many aspects that overlap with economic health and well-being. Recently, a great deal of effort went into preparing the Clinton Connection Action Plan. The plan can speak for itself, and I encourage each of you to read it when you can. There are several aspects of that plan that speak to our collective need to support its goals. The area in question is the South Side of Rock Hill, Long Saluda, and there are key features of this area that point to a need for more intentioned investments. It's a food desert with access to healthy food options minimal. Rates of preventable chronic diseases are also much higher, reducing life expectancy in this area by almost 10 years from the South Carolina average of 77 years. To make the needed changes to this area, it will take a multifaceted approach that brings developers, residents, businesses, service organizations, and governmental bodies together to do what is needed to thrive. Each of us have a role to play, and all are required for us to be successful. The tax increment financing included in the plan provides a critical component to facilitate the comprehensive approach that ensures balance and sustained development to create a thriving economic engine that can and will improve the lives. I'd like to encourage the York County's support of the planned investment in this area. I recently heard that a measure of our goodness is not what we don't do, what we deny ourselves, what we resist, or whom we exclude, but by what we embrace, what we create, and whom we include. I believe this is an opportunity for York County to demonstrate our unique spirit that embodies this sentiment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lisk. And right on time, Ken Rogers.
Thank you again for receiving my comments related to Lake Point Academy. We appreciate the opportunity to have shared in the past, and what I'd like to emphasize this evening is that Lake Point Academy and the YMCA location and the campus there, what we're looking at is a facility and a location that is not Greenfield. This facility, the YMCA, was previously in the Cotton Hall. Those facilities housed, it's an event facility today, be it the Cotton Hall, and prior to that was a golf course. YMCA was a fitness and a community center, prior to that was a fit as a fiddle. Neither one of these have come out of the ground in the last two years. In fact, they predate, both of the facilities predate their neighborhoods by 10 or more years, depending on the location respectively. Given that, Lake Point Academy, when you compare it to the number of students and the number of staff members that are in each respective location historically, is less than the previous facilities on hand. If you think about, there's four different times when there is rush hour. In this particular context, we think typically it's from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. or from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. Well, those can be divided up into school year or summertime. If you take those four and you categorize them, Lake Point Academy is near to or near break-even to the YMCA previously. The other three, and that would be in the morning during the school year, the other three, Lake Point Academy is far less the number of trips than the other locations, be it the YMCA and the Cotton Hall therefore included. So I would encourage and continue to give thanks for your review, your consideration of Lake Point Academy's move to the Carolina Crossing area. And thanks to y'all. We did have the opportunity to meet last Monday, and 90-plus minute meeting, productive, and I thank particularly Mr. Flanagan for hosting that, Mrs. Flanagan, and I appreciate y'all receiving us again this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Louis Lemon.
My name is Louis Lemon, and I'm from 3068 Van Hook Drive here in York, and I am the head of school at Lake Point Academy, and for the third time, I stand before you as a representative of the teachers, parents, students, and 13 graduated classes from Lake Point to express our gratitude. Thank you to the county planning and zoning staff for working with us and for giving our plan their recommendation, and for the staff to have the wisdom to suggest a win-win rezoning plan based on our seat designation in order to support York County's future land use plan and to protect the crossings and other area residential and rural status, which removes the current risk of a higher traffic impact BD-1 operation if the YMCA remains BD-1. Thank you to the zoning review board for unanimously recommending it to you and already building in protections for traffic, both now and in the future. And thank you, county council representatives, each of you, for taking the time to review the plans, to weigh all the information, and to unanimously pass Lake Point's zoning plans to this point. We ask for your continued vote tonight to approve the zoning package, and in return, Lake Point looks forward to being good neighbors in the Shiloh Crossing community and York County. We have every reason to properly manage traffic and safety to benefit our students and our neighbors, and we have every reason to act and to operate in ways that, in the future, continue to cause you to be pleased and confident with your support and your zoning approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon. Michael Pruner.
Good evening, council. Michael Pruner, 841 Hollis Lakes Drive. When you click on the council's tab on the county website, it's under transparency, and that's what I'm here for tonight. I would like some transparency as a concerned citizen of York County. On the special call meeting last week and on the meeting on September 7th, the council saw fit to go into executive session and discuss items relating to the Fort Mill School District impact fees. Also took an action after one of the meetings to hire an attorney to advise council. I would like the council to be transparent about this. I would like the council to publish the annual monitoring report for the impact fees. We would like to know what's going on, an accounting of the fees, and review of those. Also, the fees have been surrounded by a lot of controversy, and keeping it secret is not helping anybody. So if there is something wrong here and something needs to be looked at, I think the community needs to know. And potentially, I would ask the council to also involve the solicitor's office if there is an impropriety here with the funds. There is clear and direct state law regarding these funds, and it should be followed. Additionally, I would ask council not to remit any additional fees collected to Fort Mill and keep them in the trust account that was established by the ordinance until such time these items have been brought forward. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Pruner. Beau Ziegler, did you want to speak, Beau?
I'll stroke it from the list.
Okay.
Thank you.
Cherokee Ramsey.
I'm Sarah Ramsey, and this is Cherokee Ramsey. We're from 185 Waterway Drive in Clover.
Good evening, everyone. I am your 2021 National American Miss, South Carolina, junior preteen, Cherokee Ramsey. I am a fifth grader at Oakridge Elementary School, currently running for student council. I am so grateful to be here in front of you. I'd like to start by telling you a little about me. I love to help those and be kind. Because of that, my dad and I started a garden called Cherokee's Giving Garden. The food that we grow there goes to Clover Area Assistance Center. That is a big, amazing group of people who give to those in need in our community. I've been working with them for over two years now and donated over 50 pounds this year. July 3rd, I was crowned at the state pageant in Atlanta. I was crowned by my best friend. Pageants to me means family, friends, and meeting new people. NAM is about self-confidence, goal-setting, and learning new skills, skills like public speaking, interview, and community service. In November, I will compete for the national title in a week-long event and parties. I cannot wait to have fun with my sisters queens. NAM wants girls to be theirselves and age-appropriate. That is why I can't wear makeup until I'm 13. Pageants taught me to always be kind and yourself. Thank you for giving me this time.
Thank you, Cherokee. Very well spoken and beautiful.
I live at 769 Teboks Court in York. I am part of the Glenns at Carolina Crossing Homeowners Association. By the end of the year, we will have 50 homes added to the ones over on Carolina Downs, 17. There are 67 people coming in and out each day and are concerned about the increased traffic that Lake Point Academy will be coming in and out. South Shiloh Road is a very narrow country road. It has no shoulders, it has no left-hand turn lane, and the infrastructure is not there for increased traffic. Carolina Crossing is also a very small road, and it also is very narrow. We have concerns for safety. These concerns stem from the different enrollment numbers, conflicting enrollment numbers that we have received, especially on the Tier One study that said that they have 180 students with 90 secondary and 90 elementary. As you can see, these numbers went to 210 and before the council, 205. Due to these numbers, we are concerned about what is required of the Tier Two. The Tier Two says that there needs to be a study done if there are 100 more cars coming in on a peak hour. This has already been observed at 111. Therefore, on August 26th, the board voted unanimously to ask for a Tier Two impact study and to table this rezoning until completed. Before Lake Point Academy can be a good neighbor, they need to do the right thing, and the York County Council needs to do the right thing in enforcing its codes and ordinances. Therefore, we ask for a Tier Two study and to table this rezoning until it is finished. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Tom Flanagan.
Tom Flanagan, 753 Teboks Court here in York. I feel the council has three options tonight, voting on Lake Point Academy's rezoning application. Option one would be to prove the application has submitted, which means the board would be endorsing Lake Point Academy to operate outside the codes and ordinances of York County with reference to the traffic they will generate. The board has been made aware that the enrollment and attendance numbers submitted on the Tier One traffic analysis do not agree with the actual current enrollment and attendance numbers. The Tier One traffic analysis does not include teachers and staff in their count. As stated by Mr. Stevens of the York County Planning Department, when he replied to my July 8th email, he stated, and I quote, "The school has provided the county hard numbers based on the numbers of students and the school schedule. York County can only go by the information that has been provided until proven otherwise." Option two would be to table the rezoning and require a Tier Two analysis. This means the board is saying to the applicant, because your stated enrollment and attendance numbers before the York County Planning Commission and the York County Council will generate more than 100 a.m. peak hour trips and does not agree with your Tier One traffic impact analysis that was submitted with your application. Option three is to prove the application has submitted, but a condition of the approval, and that condition would be that Lake Point Academy be allowed to operate their school but be required to stay within the parameters of the enrollment and attendance they stated in their Tier One traffic analysis. 180 enrolled with a split attendance of 90 and 90. This would require the occupancy of the school, including students, staff, and teachers, not to exceed 100 at any given time. This would ensure that Lake Point Academy will be operating within the York County codes and ordinances, and the school's operation should have minimal traffic impact for the citizens of York County as stated by the applicant. Lake Point Academy could operate with a Tier Two analysis being completed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. Karen Flanagan.
Hello, I'm Karen Flanagan, 753 Teboks Court, York, South Carolina. Like you, I've heard a lot of back and forth about this Tier One traffic analysis. The only thing that I can't get past is the 50/50 split on their application. If you look back at all of the meetings, all of the hearings that you've had, it was never represented a 50/50. It was 204 students with 135 being secondary and the remainder being elementary. Never, except for the Tier One traffic analysis, did they split their enrollment 50/50. For that reason, I would ask that you table this rezoning and require a Tier Two traffic analysis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. Tiffany Muller, I may have pronounced that wrong. Daniel Aguilar.
You're good.
Strike, okay. Christopher Wood.
Thank you. Christopher Wood, 484 West Old Limestone Road, York. I prepared the Tier One traffic analysis for Lake Point Academy and just wanted to clarify some of the data that's been presented. The main data that was analyzed into traffic analysis was based on the traffic count videoed by the school during last year's school year, and that data was then increased by 20%. That 20% increase would roughly equate to about 216 total students. The actual data was then compared to the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, which we did use a 90/90 split of students on the Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday split campus. And we did that to compare the actual data that was counted to their roughly 183 students or what we believed was a 90/90 split in traffic. And that data did compare, and that's statistical data from the Transportation Institute. It's not actual data, but it's based on statistical analysis and was used in the comparison to make sure that there was comparable values in the actual traffic count, which there was. Then the 20% increased traffic was then compared to the YMCA and Cotton Hall expected traffic, which indicated that the a.m. peak traffic was similar. Total daily traffic was less for the school, and their p.m. peak traffic would have been less. The YMCA has subsequently provided some additional traffic data which supports that analysis, that their summer enrollment and their after-school programs would have at least equaled or exceeded the expected traffic from Lake Point Academy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. That concludes our public forum session. We appreciate all of our public coming out and expressing your comments. At this time, do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We do not have any public hearings. We move to old business. Rezoning action, consider second reading, case number 21-08, tax map number 714000005 and 006. Zoning request to rezone from RD1 to ID 3.5 acres in District 1. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Rezoning action, consider third reading, case number 21-12, tax map number 448000002 044 083 084 and 149. Zoning request to rezone from BD-1, RUD Zoning request to rezone from BD one, RUD one, and AGC one to RC one, sixteen-point-two-seven-eight acres, District Three.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Winkler.
First, just want to clarify that the motion from Mr. Hamilton includes the conditions that were.
It does, I should have clarified, yes.
Second, I want to thank Mr. Flanagan and for hosting us this past Monday night and everyone that did come out to that meeting. I've been back and forth on this quite a bit and talking to staff, and you know, I'm not the traffic engineer, I'm not the expert on why we do a Tier One or a Tier Two. I know there are guidelines for it, you know, traffic counts that when it's recommended that you do one or the other, but I also understand that from staff and from the traffic engineer, you know, what was said tonight in that this is a overall, probably a reduction in traffic into this neighborhood. I know in my office, my administrative assistant had her two boys who went to the Y for after school programs and summer programs, and she talked about how much traffic was in and out of there when she was doing that. I do believe that the academy has tried to be a good neighbor so far and, you know, met what our staff has requested of them and what was recommended, and I believe that in the long run, I think the neighborhood will be happy with it. I do think, as I've said before, the school will need to be extremely diligent with what they do with traffic because there will be a lot of eyes on them, including council. But the numbers as they are are still within what was presented in the traffic study, and the reason that staff recommended that a Tier Two be done when the numbers go above two hundred or meet two hundred and fifty students or more, the two-oh-five is still within the guidelines of not recommending a Tier Two at this point, and so I support the rezoning.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We do not have any new business. Committee and other reports, Public Works Committee meeting, the Honorable Chairman, William Bumprody.
Yes, Public Works Committee, we met on Tuesday, September the fourteenth. We basically had two topics to discuss. One was the water line that was repaired or improved and dedicated to the city of Rock Hill. We discussed whose responsibility it was before the meter as well as after the meter. This improvement did help York County significantly on the other side to help service our service area. So we did do some significant repairs, and off the top of my head, I think those repairs were several million dollars to improve that water line. And also, we talked about, second item that we brought up was the heavy items, the bulky items that are collected at our recycling centers. Some policies have changed with some different municipalities, and we feel like those changes have started to increase our intake of our bulky items at our recycling centers. This has driven up our costs significantly, and we discuss to pay attention to this at our next budget cycle as to how do we offset the cost of handling such large bulky items at our multiple recycling centers throughout the county. So staff is going to keep his eye on those measures of what can we do because we're not making any money off of these items. There's a transporting cost, there's a disposal cost to receiving these bulky items, so staff is going to work and try to offset some of these costs in the near future. I think we hit over, our recycling centers are costing us one-point-two, one-point-six million dollars annually to operate with a low return, so the bulky items are causing an issue at our recycling centers, and staff's just looking at ways that we can better serve the community with collecting these bulky items. So there'll be more to come down the road from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Roddy. Finance and Operations Chairman, Robert Winkler.
Thank you. We met this evening at five-thirty. Joel Hamilton and myself were present, and we took up the zoning appeals board and raised a recommendation for Jeffrey Blair to fill an unexpired term for District Five. On the employee grievance committee, we made the recommendation for Bryant Cook for a reappointment from procurement and for Heather Savikas for a appointment in the Public Works Solid Waste Disposal vacant seat. Stormwater Appeals Board, we recommended the reappointment of Beth White for a second term, and then we got a finance update from our auditor's office, and we had a discussion on the Convention and Visitors Bureau reorganization for their board as far as what we need to do with that. And Mr. Hamilton and I could not come to a consensus out of Finance and Operations, so our recommendation was for it to come before full council at a future meeting for us to determine what council's will is for that. And I did put at each one of your seats a little two-page handout that says Convention and Visitors Bureau reorganization that has three options that are recommended for management. And we, as I said, we could not come to a consensus, so the Finance and Operations, we came to the consensus to put it before full councils.
Thank you, Mr. Winkler. We do not have any citizen concerns. Do we have a motion for executive session?
We do.
Mr. Hamilton, excuse me, if you could add a very brief contractual matter regarding county attorney's office, it would not take more than five to ten minutes at most to discuss an issue that's pending.
Move that we go into executive session regarding a personnel matter relating to annual evaluations of the county manager, county attorney, and clerk de counsel, also for the receipt of legal advice relating to a request to authorize condemnation regarding parcel, regarding project number one-one-one-four-nine-dash-zero-zero-four, tract one-one-three on US twenty-one slash SC fifty-one, also relating to a contractual matter regarding the county attorney's office.
Second.
We need to add a discussion about the Rock Hill TIF.
Proceed with legal advice.
Thank you.
Did you talk to the new non-agenda?
No.
Yeah.
Is it on here? Nope, I missed it. We'll circle back after.
Also, move that we go into executive session for further discussion relating to the Rock Hill TIF, or to receive legal advice relating to the Rock Hill TIF.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Is it possible to add a discussion regarding the Fort Mill School District impact, please?
Is there any additional legal advice that you need on that?
I can give a brief discussion on where we are today.
Also, for an update from our county attorney to provide legal advice on the Fort Mill impact fees.
Friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Thank you. All those in favor of the executive session, aye and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll take a point of order to circle back to council member, new non-agenda comments if there are any, Mr. Roddy.
Yes, I want to bring up, I might shut on. I've had some discussion with staff to look at some options to address the needs over in the Blackman Road community. I've worked with Kevin Madden and Trish also and spoken with Michael, and I was wanting to ask for this council's blessing to give staff the directive to bring us back some possible calls, what it would be to extend the water lines over in the Blackman Road community. I know we have, we've gotten or we're expecting to get a huge sum of money from the federal government, and I know we've been looking at different areas throughout York County to improve some infrastructure. I think this will bode well for the Blackman Road community if it's a project that can come in within the amount of funds that we have remaining.
Any other council members?
Yeah, I started off this morning with a phone call to take a look at our homeless population. That is increasing, especially down in the Rock Hill area. I know Lake Wiley's been battling this, Care Winds Road, but we're really starting to come over into Rock Hill pretty heavily as well. After speaking with the sheriff, you know, they said they're taking over seven hundred people to agencies across the state each year, and the homelessness is primarily due to mental illness or drug issues. So I think that we need to work together to try and find some type of solution as a council to address the issue.
Any other council members?
Yeah, actually, I do have one thing, and just kind of piggyback off what you just stated. I know that we've had a discussion in the past in regards to transportation that we could allocate over to Pathways. I think it was a van allocation. Is there any update that?
We delivered that van on Friday.
Okay.
Pathways, they picked it up here, and so they officially have it now.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Council will move into executive session in five minutes. Executive session, no action was taken. Do we have any motions?
We have two motions coming out of the executive session. The first motion is to approve condemnation requests regarding project number one-one-one-four-nine dash zero zero four, tract one-one-three on US twenty-one SC fifty-one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Our second motion is to approve signage on the York County Law Building as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Our last motion is to adjourn.
Well, we've got, and we will do that. I do want to take the time on behalf of the council to thank David Hudson, our county manager, Michael Kendry, our county attorney, and Karen Brogdon, our clerk de counsel, for all of the dedication and hard work. Each one of them does an excellent job for our county, and they have a strong work ethic. Their integrity is impeccable, and we are very proud and very fortunate to have them on our team. Our county is so much better because you are here. We appreciate that work that you do. Now, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.